Yeah.
And long hours.
As you're feeling that a new.
I think.
Have you been feeling that a new?
I think.
Probably getting rid of things that can be.
Exactly. Fire. But if you don't have. So as much as you say, you don't have. Please.
Let's come to. It's bigger than four and nine. We gotta get faster. What is there for? What's happening? As a freshman, it's going well. It's going very good. I know that's right. What's got more in? I would say if I go over, you know, we pick up some. Reporting files.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the C. Griffin Board of Commissioners August twenty-two, twenty-three meeting. Um, we need to, um, move to item three for scheduling issue for attorney. So I'd advise consider executive session.
Pursuant to C. G. A. Fifty-four, two-two-one for the purpose of consulting and meeting with legal counsel pertaining to pending or potential litigation settlement claims administrative proceedings. And other judicial actions brought or to be brought by or against the agency or any officer or employee. Or in which the agency or any officer or employee may be directly involved in pursuant to C. G. A. Section fifty-four, ten-three, B. Two, for the purpose of discussing liberating upon the appointment. Employment compensation, hiring, disciplinary action, or dismissal. Or periodic evaluations or rating of a public officer or employee. We have motion going to executive session. Fisher Tinsley with a motion, say goodbye, Commissioner. McCord.
All in favor, please join us.
Hey. He sees working.
All right. Good morning. All right. Good morning. We have a motion to return into open session. Mr. Tinsley with motion. Do we have a second? Holberg with a second all the way. Okay, Mr. McCord with a second all the way. Say aye. All right. Moving into, um, item one. Discuss possible amendments unified development code to allow chicken keeping with conditions or purposes. Of companionship and or egg production as an accessory use in all residential zoning classifications. Kelsey Carden, Staff Attorney, will address.
Good morning.
Good morning and welcome.
This has been something that, uh, I've been asked about several times, not just from commissioners, but we've also had some individuals who who appeared before me in code court. Uh, or received warnings related to chickens within the community, uh, who have asked that, um. There we go. Who have asked that, uh, we consider adopting a chicken ordinance that would allow for keeping of chickens as, uh, pets for companionship and for, uh, egg keeping. Just to give you an idea of what the current permissions are. So, uh, chicken keeping in ag- is currently in agricultural slash residential zones only, and the parcels must be three acres or larger. There is no limit on the amount of chickens if, uh, it's being used in that zoning area, and there is no limit on the associated activities related to chickens. Such as, uh, keeping, the selling of chickens, chicks, eggs, butchering, anything along those lines. You're really thinking more of, uh, like a farming style. I do believe that there is, uh, a note in there that says that if you have sufficient parking, you could even run a business out of that establishment. So I think that was what the intent was. But again, it is limited specifically to that zoning district, uh, or those zoning districts and two parcels that have three or more acres there. So, um, we are proposing an amendment to the U. D. C. Specifically to section five. Uh, for accessory uses and structures and temporary uses. Um, so currently other accessory uses include non-commercial garage, greenhouse, private swimming pools, decks, patios, and storage, storage facilities, among others. Uh, rather than attempting to navigate, uh, through our use chart, this accessory use is probably the cleanest way of making this available to citizens. Uh, chicken keeping for the purposes of companionship and egg production shall be added to the list of permitted accessory uses and structures. As set forth in section five oh four E, and it will be listed as a subsection ten. Uh, it will provide for chicken keeping for companionship and egg production that will be subject to regulations that we will add into a new section five oh four H. So, uh, the section five oh four H will be added to include the following regulations. As of right now, this is what we've come up with. Uh, but I would really appreciate any input you can have. Um, the permitted use would be allowed in all, uh, residential zoning districts. We would set a minimum lot size for the keeping of chickens, um. To, uh, a quarter of an acre. The maximum, uh, number of chickens would be three for any parcel regardless of size. No roosters would be allowed. The chickens must be kept in a fenced area at the rear of the structure. And chicken coops may be no more than six feet in height. So all coops and surrounding areas must be properly maintained and kept clean so that they don't become a nuisance. Coops and feed must be secured at all times to prevent from pests or rodents. From getting into them because we do worry a lot about how this will impact neighbors of people who are keeping chickens. And the chickens shall not, shall only be permitted again as pets or for egg production, and they shall not be kept for slaughter. Um, one of the biggest issues or kind of concerns that we had was what lot size to keep this at. Uh, I know that from speaking with Commissioner Tinsley, some, uh, areas have have done it as much as an acre. We recognize that we do have a very dense community and we have small, uh, small lot sizes. So this was our best attempt to be able to try to set a standard where the chicken production or the the chicken, uh, the keeping of chickens for egg production or for, uh, pets or companionship would not interfere with the neighbors. To the extent that we receive concerns, uh, or complaints from neighbors, we would be able to look at it and determine if a quarter of an acre is too small. Um, or if we receive complaints from individuals who live on lots that are less than the quarter acre in size, we would have, you know, the ability to be able to come back to you to see whether or not you would be open to, uh, reducing that minimum lot size for the number of of chickens. You have any questions?
In regard to, um, H. D. R. Zoning. Would apartment dwellers allowed be allowed to have chickens, even though their parcels are greater than a quarter acre, but it's not.
It says all residential zoning districts, and it is an accessory use. However, they would be required to have them in a fenced-in area. For an individual resident, I don't know that that would be possible. Uh, it would really depend on the makeup of what the the structure were to look like. Um, but our main reasoning is that because a a high-density residential zoning district may actually include, uh, individual, you know, uh, single residential structures in that zoning district area. It allowing it to be broader would give us the ability to determine whether or not the other regulations could, uh, in fact, actually be met.
Yes. Yes.
Okay. Okay.
Thank you very much, Mr. Kelsey Carden. Moving to discuss proposed draft of the street renaming and honorary street designation ordinance in the proposed facility naming policy. Staff Attorney Kelsey Carden and Brian Haynes, Director of G. I. S., will address.
Okay, Brian, you can come on up. So while they're getting that set up, um, I did want to note that Brian, this will be his first time really coming before you as the the new director of, uh, the the recently christened G. I. S. Department. Um, we are very excited about this policy and about what it means for G. I. S. Because as you will soon learn, Brian is very passionate about roads and about streets and about the way that it affects our geographic information system. Uh, so as a. As, uh, sort of a, uh, a summary of kind of how we got here, um. Um, we did meet, uh, several months back about, uh, our current policy for naming of facilities, erecting plaques, monuments, monuments and markers. Uh, and we noted some issues or concerns for all of you specifically that that policy had only been used for honorary dedications of streets or roads or facilities. And but it was not clear enough to distinguish itself from a street renaming. And in speaking with Brian and just working with general operations, I knew and and a lot of staff knows that, um. Renaming of a street or the naming of a street in general has, uh, a huge impact on operations. Uh, if you recall the, uh, audio recording of dispatch that we listened to following, uh, the January twelve tornadoes, that we we listened to it at our, um, our goals workshop at the beginning of the year. The, the chaos of a disaster and and, uh, sometimes people's inability when they're calling into E. Nine-one-one. Or with our our fire department or our police department communicating with one another. Um, one of the biggest issues that they have is duplicative names with roads. Or, um, because we have not had a system for naming streets that has ever been sort of approved or gone through a process in the past, we have a lot of streets that change the name about halfway down the road, or we may have. A street that sounds similar to one that is in the county, uh, and it really has, it has a big impact on our fire department, and I know in speaking, uh, with Chief Brock that that is one of the the biggest issues that they have. And I, I remember in listening to that recording. I can't imagine not being able to tell when you're talking with one another. They they already had to say, can you repeat that, please? There's wind blowing, and so. Determining the name of a street, making sure that's properly, properly recorded and that our E. Nine-one-one has the same information that our our police department, our fire department has, that everyone is trained and up to date. Is vital in making sure that we're providing services to people in the event of an emergency, uh, in addition to just normal everyday operations. And so. Having this broad policy in place that failed to account for how it can impact operations and failed to note. The notice procedures or potentially the liability on part of the city if we're renaming roads without considering the financial impact on the residents or businesses who would have to alter. Uh, their their websites or alter their mailing materials or make sure that the information that they're giving to the Secretary of State is correct. It it it's dangerous, uh, and so we wanted to make sure that we're creating a policy that is both consistent, objective. And serves the needs of the community as well as our emergency operations and our departmental operations. So. Because the policy did not account for renaming, we essentially got a consensus from all of you that we wanted to consider. The creation of an ordinance for street renaming and honorary street designation and have that separated out from our discussion of erecting plaques, monuments and markers. So for that reason, uh, this presentation is actually going to really get, uh, touch on four possible points, uh, depending on how how you all would like to to move on this. Uh, we will be handling street renaming. We will be handling honorary street designation. We'll be handling street reassignment, which we'll get to on explaining why that is different. And the erection of plaques, monuments and markers as memorials. I'm gonna let Brian speak a little bit about the importance of street renaming so that you can all get a, get an idea of his passion for this particular topic.
Good morning, everyone. Uh, it's an honor to be here and to speak about, like Kelsey said, one of my biggest passions is maintaining our, uh, our G. I. S. Database inventory, and today we're talking about street naming. Obviously, we know that, uh, streets provide a way for people to be, uh. Located around town, to know where they live, to track events that are going on in the city. Street names, they also help provide us address information, allows the city and county to, uh, dispatch emergency service. Services provide utility services, process, tax billing and describe locations. Those are just a few highlights, but to really touch on a few more. Some of the stuff that that we deal with in G. I. S. Is we do have a lot of streets out there that do change names. We have addresses that are out of order. Uh, odds and evens that are not on the appropriate sides of the streets. It makes it very difficult for now and one to, uh, find folks. So as many of you know, we do provide our G. I. S. Data to nine-one-one, and, you know, we are the keeper of all that data, so it's. Uh, it can be very stressful to make sure we get it right, especially in the event of somebody's life needing to be saved. So. Hopefully, this this ordinance will help us be able to make sure we have a system of checks and balances in place where. We're checking the names of the streets. We're making sure there's not duplicates of of each street out there. Uh, we already have this problem going on. We've got the same street names in the city and county, and hopefully this will, you know, fix things in the future going forward. Uh, making sure they're they're named properly and making sure that. They don't get confused with other streets that may sound similar to them. So that's kind of our our goal behind this is to try to. To make everything run smooth and make sure we we check things first and and they're they're fine with the fire and police and our elections office and other, the tax offices, things like that. So. That's what we're here for is to to make sure that gets done and any other input you guys have for us to help make this a better process. We certainly appreciate. Thank you.
The other thing I wanted to to note, just sort of on the heels of that, G. I. S. Isn't just maintaining our roads and our maps and our street system. It's also the location of all of our utilities and our signage. Uh, and that has proved to be vital in making sure that we're getting FEMA reimbursement because we do have to make sure that the placement of those signs, the GPS coordinates, the photos. Are all tagged properly, and that works with our work order system as well, and all of that documentation is what has to be provided, uh, to FEMA. In the event of another disaster happening. So we've already really, we've we've seen the vital importance of having G. I. S. And I'm really excited to be able to have a a a policy in place that will make sure that they're they're collaborating with with all the departments. Um, Brian's job is very similar to mine in that we work with all of the departments and kind of have an and and overarching idea of how each one's operations affects another, and this is one of the prime examples of that. So the proposal for street renaming and honorary street designations, uh, will, uh, i- it's to do in ordinance. That would be separate from a policy regarding the erection of monuments and memorials. We would propose that we would add an article seven to chapter seventy-eight, street sidewalks and other public places. For street renaming, it's intended to minimize costly address database errors, reduce misprovision of service and protect property and life by facilitating correct dispatch of emergency services. And for honorary street designation, the proposed ordinance would provide consistent procedures for evaluating the honorary street designations, which may require municipal resources, uh, for maintenance, um, erection and of the of the signs. And, uh, the, um, the placement of those signs going forward, specifically in situations for FEMA like I mentioned. Uh, it would also provide the opportunity for interested citizens and groups to be able to comment and speak before the board on the importance of the individual that they're seeking to honor. So the street renaming procedure, I'm gonna go through these highlights because this is really where we need your input, uh, on determining what what you're most comfortable with. We pulled specifically from, uh, city of. Val, I believe we did Valdosta, we did Brazelton and Augusta. Augusta has the most robust, uh, street renaming policy, but they are also one of the only other, uh, cities that I found. That had a G. I. S. Department that was specifically dedicated to matters just like this, and so they're similar to us now that we have our own department. Uh, and I found their their forms and and their procedures to be something that was pretty admirable, and I think that in working with Brian. On these procedures, we were able to kind of, uh, mix what they would do with what we would potentially do to come to something, uh, that's functional for the city. So applications would be submitted online or in person to the G. I. S. Department. Uh, if we get approval, we will start working on forms. Uh, that those those can be filled out just like our our parade or special event permit forms. Um, it would require a justification and a proof of compliance with the renaming criteria that are in the ordinance. The renaming criteria, um, are similar to, um, if if you're talking about honoring an individual, they're similar to what is in the policy, uh, for the, um, erection of memorials and monuments. Uh, but there is an additional, uh, requirement for, uh, continuity as well. Um. As you all know, we do have roads, as Brian said, that change, uh, name about halfway down the road. Or where people in the past have just called up to the city and said, I want this portion of the street to be different from this portion of the street. Um, continuity would make it where, um, we would not be changing. Street names for only a segment of the street unless it was to fix a continuity error and make sure that the road from beginning to end were to have that same, uh, street name. And again, that's for safety and and for, uh, our emergency personnel to be able to properly navigate and and to identify people. I believe that a lot of this process will allow us to correct some of the errors that we have in addressing that have occurred because we haven't had a procedure like this in the past. Um, it will also require a petition to be signed by at least sixty-six percent of parcels. This is the most common feature for street renaming and all of the ordinances that I looked at. Um, it will be sixty-six percent of the parcels abutting the right-of-way, so that does not necessarily mean that those parcels. Will live on that exact street or have that street name themselves, but if they are abutting that parcel and may be impacted directionally, they would also be included. We would permit a signature by an owner or a tenant of those parcels, but only one signature is permitted per parcel, so. You couldn't have the owner and a tenant both sign and count that as double signatures to get to your sixty-six percent. It would also require payment of a non-refundable administrative fee of a hundred and fifty dollars. This fee would be waived for application by any other government agency, agency, including. The county or the, um, the the s- the school. System, uh, as well as any city of Griffin Department, any commissioner or employee. Uh, G. I. S. Will review the application for compliance and conduct an internal search, so they would first, uh, assess for continuity. That's that renaming of streets that I mentioned. Um, they would consult with the city police and fire department, similar to how we do with parades or with special event permits. A notice would be sent to the Sheriff's Department, E. Nine-one-one and its tax assessor to request feedback. Uh, Brian is in communication very often with all of those entities because it, now that technology is really getting off the ground, G. I. S. Is becoming. Integral, um, to the point where it's even being put into state law for our requirements, uh, for, um, for voting and 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 things of that nature. Uh, the estimate, we would need to estimate a cost of creation and installation of street signage. This would require, uh, communication with the Director of Public Works for our for our sign shop. Um, and the applicant must pay the estimated fee prior to the scheduling of the hearing with the B. O. S. For B. O. C. Approval, unless it's one of the entities where those fees are being waived. Um, this is again a very common, uh, insert that is that is put in the the person requesting the street name. Be changed, would according to how we currently have it drafted, have to pay for the signs that would be put up. This is intended to make sure that we're not considering multiple street renaming that we're not budgeted for and not putting a burden onto our sign shop and our public works department. A a notice of hearing must be sent by regular mail to all affected owners and affected tenants fourteen days prior to the public hearing. A public hearing will be presented where, uh, the Director of G. I. S. Or, um, his or her, their designate me, um, to make a recommendation to the board. So it would essentially be considering the accepted principles of addressing and street renaming, some of which are within our U. D. C. And some of which are just best practice, and. Brian, as the G. I. S. Director, has a lot of input on what those best practices are, uh, many of which we have not followed for a very long time because we've never had a process like this. It would also include feedback from city public safety leadership, feedback from the sheriff, E. Nine-one-one and the tax assessor, and then. If the costs were not paid for by the applicant, it would also include, um, consideration of the cost of creation and installation of the signs. Proponents and opponents of the proposed street renaming will each be given ten minutes to speak regarding the request. And the board will make the final and binding decision to grant or deny the request. If approved, the renaming wouldn't be effective for ninety days. The G. I. S. Department would send official notice to all the parties previously notified, including the Sheriff's Department, E. Nine-one-one. The Board of Assessors, um, our election board, as well as customer service, utility departments and the United States Postal Service. Um, if denied, the fees that were paid in advance for the 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 street signage installation would be returned and reimbursed. However, the administrative fee would not. The intention of that administrative fee, which as we have it right here, has been a hundred and said at a hundred and fifty dollars in this draft. Uh, is intended to compensate for the review of city staff, uh, just like any other administrative fee that the city collects. We have also included a, um, provision for street renaming for emergency purposes. The city may determine, uh, the need for a street renaming as necessary for health, safety, welfare. Um, this includes for better efficiency of our emergency response system. Uh, I believe in talking with Chief Rock, this is something where they they do have recommendations for streets that have been difficult. Uh, for them to find in the past that do require extra training, um, that causes issues with dispatch. As an example, I live on Poplar Drive within the county, and there is Poplar Drive within the city. It can cause confusion for E. Nine-one-one if you have an individual who is not capable of responding. Um, or or who can't better describe where they are. So street renaming does not equal address reassignment, and I know we had had a request related to an address reassignment within the last year or so. So request to change an address of a specific parcel, whether it be the number or the designated street address such as for corner lots, does not constitute a street renaming. So a separate application for address reassignment must be submitted to G. I. S. This is a much simpler process, and it actually falls hand in hand with what G. I. G. I. S. Does regularly with assigning addresses. Um, and the intent is for it to have conformity and efficiency with our emergency response system as well as the rest of our our G. I. S. System. Uh, and they would be responsible for assigning the address numbers in event of a change. Those requests will be reviewed, uh, within ten business days, and if granted, G. I. S. Would notify parcels as usual. Uh, if denied, the applicant would have the right to appeal that decision to the board. Uh, so in that situation, G. I. S. Would make a recommendation and explanation for why that decision was made. The third portion is the honorary street designation. This is the last thing that will really be covered in the ordinance, uh, that we would be including within chapter seventy-eight. Um, so these do not change the official name of the road. Like monuments and more and memorials, they are intended to honor an individual or group of individuals who meet the criteria set forth within the ordinance. But they are no less important when it comes to signage, um, and when it comes to legacy. So majority of ordinances that I found, or some that had had kept it as a simple policy. Um, had it where the honorary designation was was listed for twenty years, and at that point in time, the sign was removed and it was given to the applicant at the time that it was taken down. They could reapply. There's nothing stopping them from that, but the idea for honorary designations is that we want to make sure we're, we still have the ability to honor, um, future contributions to the city, and so. Having that 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 put into place and having the board rule on it, um, was was important. Um, so the criteria resembled a policy for erecting monuments, no living persons, more permissions from the family or estate. Must be granted, um, for the or the. The estate of the person being honored must be granted before it will be considered. Um, this honorary signage or designation does not include, these procedures do not apply. To any, um, commemoration or honoring of our school system or the contributions of our sports teams. So, for example, the Griffin High Lady Bear sign that was put up would not have to follow these procedures, and we don't have to follow the criteria, um, that that require that the individual be deceased for a year, uh, prior to any application for honoring being considered. the criteria um, that, that require that the individual be deceased for a year uh, prior to any application for honoring being considered. The application will be made to GIS online. There is a fifty dollar administrative fee that is waived if it comes from a commissioner, a city department, city employee or uh, any other government entity or quasi-government entity. They would uh, consult with the director of public works, uh, public works and maintenance obligations, the creation, installation and placement of that honorary signage. This is often very important because they ha, you have to make sure that they're further away from the intersection. So there's no confusion with the official road name. And it's also important to make sure that we have that, that um, that data for those GPS coordinates into place in the event of storms, that we can get those signs replaced. Um, there is an estimated fee again for this signage and it would have to be paid before we would have the ability to go to the public hearing. Uh, presuming that it was not one of the exempt individuals requesting the applicant, the, submitting the application for the honorary street signage. The public hearing would be scheduled for the proponents and opponents to speak, just like it would for the street renaming. And following approval, the city would arrange for the sign to be placed as soon as possible. And GIS would ensure that the data is put into our information system so that we can have it documented for any future work order, any FEMA issues. Or to make sure that if the sign is damaged, we're replacing it as quickly as possible and keeping track of what we have around the city. As I mentioned, um, in kind of consultation with the other ordinances and policies that I've seen with regard to honorary signage, many of them listed as ten years. Um, I have uh, made it set at twenty. It would be removed at twenty years at the board's discretion. Um, and upon removal, the sign may be turned over to the applicant who applied for that honorary street designation. The applicant or others may apply to renew that designation if needed. And despite the twenty year designation, the board does reserve the right in the ordinance to be able to remove in extraordinary circumstances where that continued use of that honorary designation would compromise public trust or would otherwise, otherwise reflect um, adversely on the city. The fourth and final section is our policy. So because we had to clear up some issues uh, with trying to figure out whether or not street renaming fell under the honorary policy um, for, for erecting honorary facilities uh, and monuments. Since we removed those, we had to get a little bit more specific in that policy. So I did not change any of the criteria other than to make them more clear. Um, and I was more specific on the types that would be required and made sure that we were considering some of the projects that we've done in the past, whether it be with downtown council or, or the historic society, those are, are taken into account as well. Um, as uh, the potential for murals, um, if we were to, to try to pay for or uh, fund a project for uh, honoring someone through a mural that was put onto private property. So it does no longer cover um, the honorary designation of streets. Uh, it only covers um, the areas that are under the city's administrative control and or private property that is, is being sort of submitted to the city for uh, an honorary memorial project. So GIS will review the app, the application with the application review committee, which should be made up of the city manager, the GIS director and the public works director or their designees. The application review committee will communicate with any other government entity or quasi-government entity, committee or community group that would have an interest in that type of commemoration. Uh, it includes plaques, memorials, monuments and commemorative plantings. Uh, part of the reason for including the director of public works is not just maintenance, but because sometimes there are legal obligations specifically with our downtown. And I know there have been some questions about commemorative plantings or adopt a plan or program um, that have, have caused issues or sort of uh, kind of shaped against the, the G dot rules and regulations. And so those are things that happen that need to be considered. And a lot of times um, we, you know, we receive an application and we can't proceed because of regulations that are in place. So the D, the GIS director will make recommendations to the board and the criteria for evaluating the application, as I mentioned, is the same as it was previously. With some of the language just being cleaned up. So we can make sure that we're properly evaluating each application. That's all I have for you. If you have questions or recommendations on things to change.
Thank you.
Consider racing with other plaques that we put downtown. Or the movies, do we, are we doing, what, what is the, the process with it?
That would be under the amendment for policy for honorary naming of facilities and erection of monuments. So um, that is, would include the application process to GIS. And it would be reviewed initially by the review committee for city manager, the public works director and GIS because GIS does note. You guys post the board notes for those? Yeah. So those plaques are documented with our, within our information system. Mm-hmm. Yes, yes.
The second, same thing, um, I guess my own question. If a new street is, is put a, a new set of business or new street is created. How, how long does that take to get to the GIS?
So that would be, if it was a new street for a new development, it would be during a, um, usually during the development process. And I believe that um, Brian has consulted during that process, just like our water department or any other utility when plans are submitted. There are very loose rules within our UDC related to street naming. And the next phase of this that GIS has requested would be presenting more formal rules to make sure that we're getting more consistency going forward on what our street renaming is. And that we are providing more objective kind of, kind of rules to make sure that we're not having these these issues. We're not having the duplicative road names or the mispronounced names or having um, what is it, an avenue?
Like. Street extension being named properly.
Yeah.
Dead ends support kind of thing. And boulevard is a big thoroughfare.
And those are things that we have not considered in the past. As of right now, they are just done through GIS's consultation. And anything that um, is within our UDC is, is quite vague. And so he can exercise the, kind of the approval over that.
Street names come with the, when they, when they build it.
The plans. So it's, yeah, yeah.
And my final question. Um, how would this relate to my request back in late January, February? Where the street House Award Drive extends all the way around to Cavern Creek, which is probably less than half of a mile. Enough, I know it's, it's less than that, probably a quarter from where uh, House Award Drive ends, which is a curb that comes to the end of Cavern Creek, which is a stop sign going into Sixth Street. Um, I was asked to get a request from the school system. Um, I brought that in. How does that relate to this? What, what, what do we need, what, what was next in order to um, honor, honor this, honor this citizen, inform a citizen? Um, who done a lot for our school system, uh, city. What, what, what do we need to do um, in writing? So that it will I won't have to go back and say we did this, we did, what, what, what is, how do we make it happen?
So are we have been, I've been discussing this with Brian and I believe that he's already assessed the location that you're talking about. Tried to look at the number of parcels that we currently have there to figure out how that would fit into this procedure. The first step would be having our first and second reading and making sure that this is adopted. As of right now, the earliest that we would be able to have it adopted would be September twenty second. However, our plan um, is that I will twenty, twenty six, sorry, today's the twenty second. I apologize. So uh, the earliest we'd be able to do that is September twenty sixth. Brian and I will be working together to make sure that we have all of our forms set up so that things will be off the ground. But since the request is coming in from the school system, they would be considered a government entity. And in those situations, GIS would actually be the department that would be sending out the mailings to the tenants and the owners that are abutting the property to get approval. I think that that's even more important in this scenario because the request is coming from the school system. But it's the individual parcel owners who would be impacted and we need to make sure that they receive that proper notice. Make sure that all of our emergency personnel and the sheriff's department are notified. So essentially, once it is completely off the ground, the um, either, either you or any individual with the school system could come and sit down with Brian. We can go through the form and have that filled out and we can get that process for researching and making sure that we have all of the documentation in order.
September twenty sixth. And who do I need to meet with?
You would meet with, with Brian. Once it's approved, you would meet with Brian. And.
Hold on, what, 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 what we gotta get approved first?
So yeah, so the, the ordinance would be presented. I have attached the draft of the ordinance to the agenda item here today as well as, as well as the draft of the policy. The policy would be adopted uh, by resolution. So we can do that at the next meeting. Uh, when we put it onto the agenda, but assuming that you have no changes, I have some minor typographical changes I would like to make. Some typos, uh, if I'm being honest. Uh, but it, it will go on to the next meeting as is, unless you have recommendations for changes today. Specifically, please make sure that you are, um, you are content with the fees, you are content with the timing, you are content with the criteria. Because in order to make this go on the twenty sixth, we would need to make sure that draft is finalized.
Unless something comes up that.
Commissioner Rock? That coordination would happen through this process. Brian would contact his counterparts. Um, well, he really is his counterpart at the county with regard to GIS. But he would contact the sheriff's department, E nine one one, the tax assessor and potentially the elections board as well. Yes. And that would include, um, that would really fall under the potential, potentially an emergency uh, street renaming provision. And GIS would be able to sort of present that to all of you. Um, and determine whether or not an emergency street renaming needed to happen. If uh, the fire department or the police department said, yeah, we have a lot of issues with going to on, on calls for Mockingbird Lane, depending on, you know, i- if it's created confusion through dispatch in the past. Those are the exact situations that we would like to prevent happening in the future and that we'd like to solve with this process going forward. No. So we would have to change.
I'm good to go.
Appreciate the hard work. Um, I'm, I'm, I'd like to see this, put on the, the, the earliest agenda we can put it on. Thank you so much.
Um, a commission record as a, as a note, because we will be submitting the application, rather than having someone come in with an application, come in with a petition. GIS will be the one sending out the information to those addresses to get the sixty six percent approval. And so it may be a little bit longer process than what we would normally have when that application is filed. But I'm hopeful that because the school board's involved, maybe they've had some requests in the past from those uh, those property owners. To well, it would be, but it, the problem is it's this, it's the abutting. And I believe that there's two residential properties that abut that street that are on that street. Yes. Yeah. Yes.
There, you've also got the apartments or cabin drive.
I think it was just two residential parcels was my concern that if it's coming from the school, from the school system, but then those two parcels have that we, we would need to get their approval as well. But again, it really, it should be quite a simple process because it's just as simple as saying, hey, would you be interested in this? And they just sign their name approved. Um, once we have that, it proceeds just like normal. But GIS is taking on the burden of being the applicant in that scenario, rather than having the school system have to go out and do it themselves. Although they can feel free to do so. Um, but this is really a service that GIS is offering to any of the other government or quasi-government entities, including the county or any commissioner for that matter, that they will, they will do the work of getting the signatures on that petition. Um, based on the request from another government entity. So I just wanted to note that, you know, that it's not the exact scenario that we would normally have, but we have accounted for what happens. When we do not have an applicant come in, if they're just coming to GIS or one of you would like to make that request as well.
Thank you, Mrs. Carden and Mr. Haynes. Is there any other business? Good motion, good adjourn. Richard Tinsley, motion second one, Mr. Brock. I'll see y'all tonight at six o'clock.